Good evening and welcome to the October.
October.
We have a.
You need to get your.
There it is, should be. Hang on a second, please.
Hang on a second.
Stay with me. Okay, I apologize for that. Let me try it again. Good evening and welcome to the October 5th, 2021 Select Board meeting. This meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please let me know. Pursuant to Governor Baker's June 16th, 2021 signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, that's General Law 30A, Section 20, until April 1st, 2022. This meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted both in person and via remote for public participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, or conference ID 134208476, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. And let me remind everyone, while you're on and unless you're speaking, please mute your mic and turn off your camera. And I'll let's start with a roll call. Board Member Davis.
Present.
Board Member Metters.
Present.
Board Member Castro.
Present.
Board Member Dykens.
Present.
And the Chair is present. You'll notice I took my mask off to speak during this period of time. It's allowed, I was told. I sounded like Darth Vader, so I'll do that. But most of the time I'll have it on unless I have to go for a longer period of time. We have two changes to our agenda, and I'll go over our agenda and I'll talk to them at the time. The first thing we will start with are public announcements and agenda item requests. And then we get into new business. And as usual, we'll have an update on the coronavirus, and we'll have drinking water. Then we'll be followed by PFAS and our drinking water status. And both of those public input is accepted. We then get into public comments on our agenda, our business agenda. Before we do that, we have a public hearing. But that public hearing, there's a change. It's going to be, we're going to vote to continue that. Then we get into the business agenda items that are board discussions only. The first one up is going to be canceled, which is a day entertainment license for amplified music was requested. Then we get into introduction of a website portal of community voice, then a Fisherman Storage Area at Chatham Municipal Airport, then the Summer Residence Advisory Committee Report Update, and then a discussion on the Eldridge Garage property, 365 Main Street. And then we'll convene the Affordable Housing Trust and go into an executive session. So that's how we'll start. Before we start, any comments by the board? Corey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, this could probably fall under agenda item request, but for the, our agenda item on the Fisherman Storage later this evening, I just, I would like to request that we allow any leaseholders that are either present or online to be able to speak during that agenda item if they so choose, and be available for any questions the board may have.
Okay. Anybody have an issue with that? I don't. Okay, fine, Corey. We'll get to public announcements and agenda items, which is already done. Any others from the board? Do we have anything from the public? I don't see anything. Okay, let's move on to our new business, starting with coronavirus update. Dr. Bob.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just quickly, before I start the coronavirus update, I just want to remind everyone that we have a flu clinic coming up on Tuesday, October 19th, from 10:30 a.m. until 12:30 p.m. That will be a drive-through clinic at the Chatham DPW Garage on 221 Croll Road. And registration for that is now open, and you can register by going to chathamfluclinic, all one word, dot timetap, T-I-M-E-T-A-P, dot com. And that's where you can register for the upcoming flu clinic. We will have both regular doses of flu vaccine as well as the high dose for our older residents. And if you need any assistance in registering for the clinic, you can call the Chatham Council on Aging or the Chatham Health Division, and we can assist you in making your reservation online. So with that, for today's COVID numbers, let me share with you my screen here quickly. And the first graphic that I have up is our monthly reporting of COVID cases as well as resolved cases since the beginning of the pandemic in March of 2020. We currently have a total, have recorded a total of 396 confirmed cases in Chatham since the beginning of the pandemic. We've had 35 cases in September of 2021 versus eight cases in total in September of 2020. So we've had about four times as many cases so far this September as we had in September of last year. And we've had one additional case so far in October of this year. Out of those 35 cases, 19 were in vaccinated individuals, or the so-called breakthrough cases. Six cases were in individuals that were not vaccinated, and 10 cases were in individuals for which we don't know their vaccination status. I can tell you that through September of this year, our case counts on a weekly basis have been trending downward, which is a good sign. We started out with 12 cases the first week in September, and we ended the last full week in September of this year with only five cases. So that mirrors what has been seen in the state as well as nationally. To go along with that, our percent positivity, as you can see in the next graphic that's up, is trending downward again. We've had two weeks, the week of the 23rd and the week of the 30th, reporting periods where the trend has been downward in percent positivity, which again is a sign that the pandemic, at least in Chatham, is starting to abate again after we had that upswing in late August and early September. And we're seeing the same trend in our average daily incident rate, which is also again starting to decrease after this kind of third surge, if you will, although not as high as previous ones, but this third surge in cases that we did see in late August and early September. And in the last graphic that I just wanted to show is one that we've shown before, which is an indication of the age groups that are currently being hit with confirmed cases. And again, the two highest age groups are that 20 to 29-year-old demographic, as well as the 30 to 39-year-old demographic. They have both decreased slightly, and we are seeing a slight uptick in cases in the, you know, the younger demographics, those under 19-year-olds. As I'm sure the board is aware, nobody under the age of 12 is eligible for the vaccine yet. And so we have been seeing that uptick in the younger age demographics over the last, you know, couple of months, as the Delta variant has been hitting unvaccinated individuals fairly significantly. And then the last thing that I just wanted to mention tonight, and I will stop sharing my screen, is that as I'm sure everybody hopefully is aware, folks under, sorry, folks over the age of 65, and those that have certain underlying medical conditions are now eligible for that so-called booster shot, or the third shot of the Pfizer BioNTech vaccine. Moderna and J&amp;J have both submitted data to the CDC and FDA for that third shot with their vaccines, as well as Pfizer has also submitted data on vaccine use in those five years of age and older. So we anticipate hearing more news on all three of those items over the next couple of weeks. The state has already been working on plans to get the vaccine out to the pediatric age group, those under the age of 12, hopefully starting either later this month or probably definitely in November. But we'll have more information on that as soon as it's announced, as well as keeping folks updated on the availability of booster shots for both the J&amp;J as well as the Moderna vaccine. So that's what I have for my update tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Any comments from the board? Questions? Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just really wanted to clarify something for the record, because I watched the Board of Health meeting last night, and they considered a request for an exception to the masking requirement. And unfortunately, I think they were under the misimpression that the Select Board had requested something much broader. Specifically, I think they thought that we were seeking to have an exception solely for people at the dais, and that it would be applicable in all town meetings and all meeting rooms. Unfortunately, I think there was a misunderstanding, because specifically what this board asked the Board of Health to consider was whether, as to this meeting room only, the large meeting room and the town annex, the Chair of any board or committee that meets here would have the discretion to allow waiver of the masking requirement, not just for people at the dais, but for everyone in the audience. I just really wanted to get that clarified for the record. And it's, because I don't want there to be a misapprehension among the public as to what the Board of Health was doing as it relates to what we had asked for. And I'm looking at the audience in this, we have three times the audience we had last week. We have three people as opposed to one person. So I'm not interested in bringing this back to the Board of Health, but I just really wanted to clarify that. And I understand that, you know, misunderstandings can happen, and that appears to be what happened in this case. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dean. Anyone else from the board? Anybody from the public? I see none here. I don't see anything online. That's it. Dr. Bob, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next up is our drinking water testing and PFAS. Tom Temple.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Select Board Members. As indicated in my report, well, 5 and 8 remain offline. The Water Division continues to work with Mass DEP collecting PFAS samples. We took samples today, as well as we'll have our next sampling on October 19th. The town's drinking water supply is safe to drink, in compliance with Safe Drinking Water Act, as well as the, it meets industry standards, EPA and Mast DEP standards. With respect to well 4, they're pretty much moving right along on schedule. We have tentative testing scheduled for Thursday and Friday of this week. Mast DEP had given a host of list and minor items that they wanted squared away. They chlorinated the lines in well 4. We'll be taking bacteria sampling this week, towards the later part of the week. Wooden and Kern is finalizing the skater at well 4. This, as you recall, skater is what tells the pumps when to go on and off, you know, whether the pH is high or low, what needs to be added, et cetera. So quite important that we get that squared away. We're performing the pump testing and chemical feed, et cetera, tomorrow. We're anticipating Mast DEP will meet next week, in the middle of the week, for that, to get that back online. Once we receive the letter from them authorizing us to move forward, we already had the Board of Selectmen's approval, but we will, I will reach out and let everybody know once we get the letter giving us the green light when that happens. The water pumpage for the month of September was negative 27% versus last year, so we're down quite a bit from last year, even though we still can do better. As you're driving through, I want to thank a lot of the people there that are giving us the information on who has water still going on the irrigation systems, whether it's on private wells or regular wells. We're able to look into it and send letters to these people telling them that they're in noncompliance with the Board of Selectmen, of Select Board's requirements for mandatory watering. And so I do appreciate those that have been reaching out to us. It is quite helpful. With respect to the temporary measures that we were looking to take care of during the special town meeting, I did answer some of the questions. If anybody has any further questions after reading what's in the package for the, for the answers to those questions, I'll be more than happy to address them. Just know that the two, I guess the big thing is when they, the big confusion was when they said they're, we're going to be treating this stream of water. It's really two GAC vessels, the lead-leg formation, that will be taking care of up to 450 gallons per minute, which we're trying to get in service by April 2022. You know, that was the additional $650,000 for the emergency procurement and installation and setup that goes along with it. Keep in mind, in order to treat both wells, for both PFAS, iodine, manganese, et cetera, it's going to take a total of six vessels. We're only asking to utilize the two to get it in place for springtime in case we have another drought condition similar to what we had this year. And we're trying to move forward with the design and the construction when that happens. You know, if we have that many vessels on the site, it makes it awfully tough to do the construction. So, you know, with the, hopefully with well 4 going online, as well as trying to get well 5 back on with this lead-leg vessels being in place, that should help out our situation. That'll give us 450 gallons per minute, plus the close to 1,000 gallons per minute for well 4. That's all I really have for tonight. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, we have Dean first, then Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tom, thank you. I had two or three questions. With respect to the use of the two new vessels, you state two possible options for how you would work that. One would be to reduce flow from the two wells, 5 and 8. The other would be to treat only one well. Which is the preferable option? Which one do you think you're likely to utilize?
I think the preferred one is to utilize, just treating the one well, well 5. You put these vessels in line, so it's first taking care of, you know, going through the first vessel, and then through the second vessel. What that does, it takes the iodine, manganese out of the first, and then the second one will take care of the PFAS. And what that does is we can put that in a position where we don't really where we don't really have to worry during construction with minor changes as we start to do with the build-out. It makes it a lot easier for us. That still also gives us the ability to blend 5 through through the system with DEP's approval if we need it to for emergency reasons, but there is another option for that. I prefer going with treating the one well, knowing that everything's squared away on 5, and that gives us the ability, once construction takes place, we're able to get things in a systematic method going through to do the construction of the site and not slow us down and having to move things around.
Thanks. The next question is with respect to well number 4. Is that, was the capacity there 800 gallons a minute? Or was it something?
I want to say that it's close to 1,000 gallons per minute. You know, off the top of my head, let me just pull it chat you in one second.
The reason I ask the question is that you have a sentence that says, putting well 4 online would provide the necessary water to offset the loss of one of the wells, 5 and 8. It seems to me it would be able to offset both of them. If it can, especially.
Yeah, Tom, Tom Barr, are you one? Do you have that information off the top of your head? I know you deal with them day in and day out. For well 4, what the gallons per minute would be on that?
Yes, so well 4 is, it's set for a maximum 800 gallons per minute. We don't want to run it at that maximum level. We would be running that well, once we have it up online, at around 600 gallons per minute. So there's still that 400 gallons per minute that we would not be able to get with well 8 offline. So just kind of go back a little bit on the question about the preferred method. What we would prefer to do is treat well 5 through the two GAC filters, and then that would allow well 8 to still be used by blending it into the system, because well 8's PFAS levels have been lower. If we were able to remove the PFAS from well 5 and blend it with well 8 as it heads out of the Training Field well site, that'll lessen the amount of PFAS in the water as it enters the distribution system. We would sample it at the head of the Training Field well site, where we have a sample hydrant that has been installed, and that would tell us what the PFAS levels are going out to make sure that they're well below the 20 parts per trillion set forth by MAS DEP before we put it into the system. So that was just, wanted to help out on that question there as well.
Well, thank you for that.
And keep in mind also, MAS DEP is going to require us to do that sampling regardless if we do end up blending, if we need that well 8 involved. But hopefully, we can, you know, we have a decent winter where we have some precipitation back and we're able to get our groundwater up.
Are you going to come back to the board if you intend to do this blending? For an okay?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, we can certainly do that as well, so everybody's on the same page. We've been upfront right from day one.
Right.
As soon as we hit levels that exceeded, we shut everything down immediately and brought the board on board where we were, and we're going to continue that same stance as we move forward.
Okay. So back to well 4. So from what Tom Barr was saying, you could pump out 600 gallons rather than 800 gallons. So you'd be offsetting perhaps one and a half, the loss of one and a half wells on 5 and 8, if you bring 4 on? Is that?
Yeah, because the two of them together, they're right around, you know, 1, 450 and 550, and you're not running those at full capacity either. So yeah, it's close to that.
It's something more than one well. The last, the last question is, you mentioned that the wells currently are running 12 to 15 hours. What's per day? What's the ideal?
Anything less than 16 hours per day is, the industry standard is, you know, 16 hours per day is the top side of that. So we had been running, you know, three or four weeks ago, we were up to, you know, 18, 19 hours in that range.
Right.
So, you know, we're starting to see the numbers go down, and, you know, maybe more people are leaving, I'm not sure, but our numbers are definitely getting back. We only had one low tank level alarm that went off this past week, so that was good to see as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you, Dean. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Tom, for your report, and Mr. Barr as well. Just following up on well number 4, I think I read that you thought it may be the middle of this week that the MAS DEP will do the walkthrough. You thinking that's going to be next week now?
Yeah, I think it's going to be closer, because we had to get skater onboard, and we still had some things that we were working out from MAS DEP's original list. So by the time we get that done and do the final testing that we need to do and everything ready, it's probably going to look towards the middle of next week by the time they come out and take a look at everything and hopefully give us the sale of approval to move forward.
But the testing of the water has already been done? We're just waiting results?
Yeah, we've been sampling right along, you know, for this, and giving them all our data that we've had. So they have all that. We're just, the testing that we're looking for is the actual, the new rehab that we've just done internally, because we have to make sure that all the all the tanks and everything are working properly, and what's being called for, what, you know, when we need different levels for different, for the pH, et cetera. So all that stuff has to be in line, so when they ask us to do something in front of them, it's going to be able to react and do what the machines are supposed to do. So that's when, I say we're testing, that's what we're really trying to achieve, is the finalizing everything to make sure everything's in line. We will, where the lines have been filled, we are doing our bacteria sampling this week as well, at the end of the week. And, you know, so I don't think we'll see any problems with that either.
Okay, good. So we're thinking maybe middle of next week or the week after or so to get that back online? And I know you don't have to get our permission to bring it back online. We've already taken that vote. But I think it'd be great if you just shoot it on email, if you, you know, or whatever, just to ask to make sure we know when it does go back online.
Yeah, I think what I'll do is, I think what I'll do is I'll take a copy of the letter once we have the letter from MAS DEP. Before we turn on the system, I will forward that letter to the Select Board and make sure that you all have a copy of it, so you know that we're all set to go.
So I want to switch gears just a little bit. And so the GAC technology. We had an article in the Cape Cod Times on PFAS. 21 ponds were tested, and they failed miserably on PFAS in Barnstable. So number one, have we tested our ponds? Number two, does Barnstable use the GAC technology and what they have already installed? I believe they've already installed PFAS treatment down there. Are they using GAC, Mr. Barr, Tom, do you know? And if not, what are they using? Because certainly seems as though they've got a problem.
I don't believe that we have tested our ponds. Jeff, as far as I, you know, for PFAS, I'm not positive on that. I might defer that to Dr. Bob, where he does normally the testing of the ponds itself. And Tom Barr, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the system that they use, if they have used the GAC there.
In Barnstable, with the several water districts out there, I'm not sure exactly where those ponds were. But I do know that COMM, which is Center of Loss of the Marson's Mills, they're using resin. I do believe Hyannis Water has the GACs. The testing in the ponds does not necessarily reflect negatively on the treatment of the GACs. What the GACs will do is that removes the PFAS from the water. It stays in the carbon, and then we would take the carbon once the results are starting to fade a little bit and not be as strong. This carbon's removed and taken out. So the PFAS is not being re-entered back into the ponds, just to try to clear that up. And I wonder if Dr. Bob has an answer about the ponds.
Yeah, no, I didn't mean to insinuate that one iota. I just was wondering about pond testing here in Chatham, that's all. I wasn't insinuating that GAC doesn't work, and that would go back into any kind of pond or anything.
Jeff, and Dr. Bob has his hand up.
If the water's been treated, then I think, you know, it's been treated.
Okay, Dr. Bob?
Yeah, we have not done any testing on any of our freshwater ponds to date in Chatham. We are looking at that as part of our, one of the proposals that we received for the source assessment kind of work.
Okay.
But keep in mind, the presence of PFAS in the freshwater ponds is not unexpected. You know, as we've talked about before, PFAS is ubiquitous in our environment. It has been found in pretty much every water resource that's been looked at around the world, because it is in so many different compounds. The freshwater study that was done in Barnstable was part of a specialized study. If you remember, a number of these studies first started out, well, they've been conducted through the Silent Spring Institute. They first looked for PFAS in the groundwater. They then looked for PFAS in drinking water supplies. They looked at PFAS in septic system effluence, wastewater treatment plant effluence. And the latest one to look at is the freshwater pond situation. Just one thing that is important to keep in mind, there are no standards for PFAS in surface water bodies. So to find it in these bodies is not unexpected. It's just there are no standards for it. So even if it's found, we have nothing to compare it to. We have no public health standards. There's no EPA standards. It's kind of the, you know, information only at this point. Whether, you know, will that change in the future? You know, it's part of this whole list of emerging contaminants that we find in water that, you know, over time become more and more regulated. And so I don't, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if some point we do see some regulations for PFAS in freshwater bodies. But to my knowledge, there's been few, if any, of the epidemiological studies that go along with the detections to say, just because you detect it, is it a significant risk? And just to confirm what Tom Barr said, the Hyannis Water District, which was the first water district on Cape Cod to deal with PFAS, they are using granular activated carbon in their treatment system. And they did something very similar to what Chatham's doing. Put in some temporary filters to get through a short period of time while you build a more permanent facility. And so that's exactly the same route that Chatham is taking, given the lead time that it takes to build a complete facility.
Thank you, Dr. Bob. Very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bob. Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else on the board? Anyone in the public? I don't see any hands up. Elaine?
Yes, thank you. Just one question on well 4. I may have missed it. I know you said you've done testing on it. Have you actually been able to draw water on that from the wider part of the aquifer and test it for PFAS? Because I know it showed some in April, I think. And are we pretty confident that's not going to show PFAS when it's up and running?
Well, I think, as has been mentioned before many times, there's no guarantees for anything. I mean, we're not seeing the numbers right currently. When we're doing the testing, we saw a small amount of trace of it when we did well 4, and same thing with 5, 8, et cetera. But, you know, they're well below the threshold, and we're hoping that they stay at that, at that, those levels that we were seeing before. Our goal is to get as many of these wells up and running as we can, so that we're, you know, we're pulling off the different wells, and we're not running them, you know, for 16, you know, 12 and 16 hours at a whack. We're trying to, you know, kind of float between them and give them rest in between. So that's what our ultimate goal is, is to just keep moving through and hopefully get our other wells back online as we can go ahead and build them and get them in place, so.
Okay. Thank you, Elaine. Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll continue on. Next is up, up is our public comments on our business agenda. Let me just reiterate one thing. On our business agenda, the next thing up is prior to our business agenda is a public hearing, which we're going, we have to vote to continue. So then the business agenda, which normally is board discussion. The first item, one-day entertainment license has been canceled. And then we get into a number of other issues. And the fishermen's storage area discussion, those fishermen that are on the, that are part of the agenda item can speak at that time. Okay, that's the way it is right now. Okay. So any public comments on our business agenda? See none in the House? And none on electronically? Okay, let's continue to the public hearing, which is a public hearing, entertainment license, Dogfish Taco Company, Kirk Metters.
Town of Chatham Select Board Public Hearing Notice. Notice is hereby given that the Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 5, 2021, at 5:30 PM in the large meeting room at the Town Office Annex, 261 George Rider Road, to consider a request for a new annual entertainment license for live amplified music by Peter J. Higgins DBA Dogfish Taco Company. Peter J. Higgins, Manager, 22 Barnhill Road, Chatham, Massachusetts, 02633. All interested parties are encouraged to attend or participate in the hearing via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. Signed, the members of the Select Board.
Thank you, Corey. And the request is to continue it to October 12. Do I have a motion to that?
No, move.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Okay, let me take a vote. Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Board Member Nacastro.
Aye.
Board Member Metters.
Aye.
Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Chair says aye. It's carried October 12. Okay, next on our agenda is an introduction to, of a community website portal. And it's Ryan Darman. Welcome, Ryan.
Good evening. Hey, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Ryan Darman, IT Manager for the town. I'm here to introduce Community Voice. I will share my screen real quick. All right, so with the town's redesigned website, I'm introducing a new integrated feature, which is a portal through which members of the public can submit comments on specific town initiatives. This portal is the Community Voice module. So I'll show you real quick how to get there. On the Chatham homepage, there's a couple ways you can get there. By going to Community, under Residents, there's Community Voice. Under Business, under Resources, it's Community Voice. And then also, under Online Services, you can find Community Voice. So the Community Voice module allows a forum and dialogue between the town and the residents and business owners by categorizing topics and allowing discussion between the town and the public. It is our hope that ideas are able to be shared and implemented. To kick off Community Voice, the first initiative is mobile food vending regulations. Public input is being collected in advance of a community forum on this topic, which is planned for November 1. There are five questions on policy decisions posted to Community Voice, and the public is invited to submit comments to these questions. So real quick, I'd just like to go over how to participate using Community Voice. And first, you have to create an account. So creating an account. And I'll show on the webpage right after this. But what you'll do stepwise is navigate to the homepage, chatham-ma.gov. At the top of the page, you can see here, you can create an account. After you click that, you complete the registration form, oops, and click Create Profile. And then you'll have to verify your account via email. And then, at that point, you'll have the opportunity to create a password. So let me show you real quick. On the website, you can see it up here. Create an account. First name, last name, and email are required. There's a couple more options here. You can make a profile. You can upload a picture. You can pick your display name. It will default to your first and last name. And then after you agree to the policies, terms, and conditions, you click Create Profile. And then at that point, you'll be emailed, and you'll have to verify your email. All right, so after you have a login to join the discussion, you can navigate to Community Voice by the ways I showed you before, or you can go directly to Community Voice by going to chatham-ma.gov/communityvoice, and then click on an initiative. So I'll show you here real quick. So I'll show you here real quick. So click on a question. So within the initiative are those five questions. And then at that point, if you're not logged in already, it will give you the option to log in or create an account. You log in, and then from there, you can add your comment, and then click Add Comment. And I'll just do that real quick up here. Here's the comment box, so. And then you click Add Comment. There's also the feature to spell check. So if you have a big comment and you want to, you want to do a spell check, you can do that. And then after you add your comment, it, everyone will be able to see it, it will be, it will be public. And then I just want to also add that there are other ways to submit comments for this initiative. Written comments can be mailed to the Town Manager's Office at 549 Main Street, Chatham, Mass. 02633. And comments can also be emailed to communityforum@chatham-ma.gov. And disinformation will be pushed out to like our other, we have another module, News Flash, some people have already signed up for it. So it's a way to post on the webpage. I'll show you real quick. It'll be posted on our news and updates, and it will be posted on our social media and via email. So that's my presentation, and I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
Thank you, Ryan. There's Shereen and Jeff after.
Thank you, Ryan. I, I signed up this morning, or this afternoon, to Community Voice and really excited to have a robust discussion about the, the mobile food vending discussion. I have to say, it was very easy to do, and I think this is going to be just a great platform for everybody to be able to weigh in on their ideas and give us a lot of feedback going forward. So I just encourage everybody to get involved.
Thank you, Shereen. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Ryan. That looks great. I think it's a great addition to a way to have our, our citizens interact on issues. I think mobile vending is a great issue to introduce it with. I think it'll attract some attention. I think it's a really neat application during this time of COVID, and I applaud it, and I think it's a great way to get input. Love it.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else? My, my comment, I, I agree, and I'm glad to see that you put the other, other ways that people could, can either send an email or, or send a snail mail, as it's called. But in any case, this is a, this is a great one for public input. I hope we get a lot because we, we're, we're starting from scratch on where we want to do it. And Chatham is, is sort of unique. We don't have a lot of places you can park a, a mobile food truck. And when we want to do it, and how we want to do it, and where it should be done, and it needs considerable public consideration. And I'm looking forward to it. I hope everyone can read it and, and then provide us some information. Dean, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ryan, thank you for the presentation. I just had one question. When you had that up on the screen, I saw a box that said, this is my idea, or what's my idea? Does that mean anybody can enter the community, the, sorry, the Community Voice at any time and just, it doesn't have, their comment doesn't have to relate to, in this case, what's posted is the, the food trucks? If they have an idea for the town, they can just go in at any time and, and.
Yep. Indicate it. Yep, so, yep, that's a little feature. If anyone has an idea for an initiative, they can submit it. And then Shawna, myself, and Craig will be able to see that submittal. And then from there, I could make it onto Community Voice. Yep.
Anything else from the board? Thank you, Ryan. That's great.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now move on to the Fisherman's Storage Area. Shereen.
Mr. Chairman, I'm recusing myself from this discussion.
All right, thank you, Shereen. What's up is Fisherman's Storage Area at Chatham Municipal Airport. Consider Request by Permit Holders for an Alterment Storage Space. This was a request by Corey. And let me turn it over to Corey, then bring it to the board, and Terry Whalen's on, and then I'll get over to Terry if he has any comments, okay?
Oh, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a little background. So basically, May of, of this year, the Airport Commission voted to terminate the use of the Fisherman's Storage by the various leaseholders who use the property based on the FAA-funded Wildlife Hazard Management Plan. Subsequently, letters were sent out on July 29th under the signature of our Town Manager with the one timetable of that all the gear and material will be removed from the property by Friday, November 19th of this year. So the very short window that we have left to address this, this conversation, I was approached by one of the leaseholders, I know Selectman Davis, that was also addressed, or approached. So we have a couple, a couple things to consider this evening. First is, letters were sent out both to the Select Board and the Airport Commission. Right now, an extension of the use of property, of the existing property would fall into the jurisdiction of the Airport Commission. They hopefully will have that on their future agenda to discuss that. That would probably be a nice deal, clean method of giving the leaseholders another season to kind of come up with a future plan. But to be very frank, I don't think that is necessary, given that the extension would be granted. So I would like to come back to the board and consider another town-owned location, at the very least for a temporary scenario, potentially for a long-term scenario. These could be two different locations, we don't know. I do know the leaseholders, you know, some have decided probably not to, you know, renew the lease, others have been using these facilities since the 80s. So this gear is going to end up going somewhere. It may end up in their backyard, you know, down the street, from their house, whatever. But there's, there has to be a location for the equipment to be placed at some level. So I know the town has kind of kicked around different ideas, locations over time. Unfortunately, we haven't got a tremendous amount of traction. I, and I requested this agenda item that the town, the Select Board consider. I would hope we could show some support to the leaseholders who would like to have a, a new location, at least for the temporary season, you know, get them through this season. I'd also, and I know, I know Katie, I don't know if you could shed any light on this, I, I was under the impression, but I don't see anything in the packet, that the Town Manager was going to look at the GIS coordinator and kind of determine if there were any town-owned sites outside of the watershed areas that we could have considered. But it doesn't appear that we've gotten that far. So I'm not sure if there's any information that you could provide on that data.
Go ahead, Corey.
Thank you, through the chair. Yes, actually, I think Terry Whalen is on the call tonight and could potentially discuss, I believe he's prepared to discuss that or show some GIS maps that were prepared.
That would be wonderful. So basically, just to wrap up the introduction, I'd like to kind of, you know, there's two paths that are going to be taken. Obviously, the leaseholders can wait until the Airport Commission to make their determination whether they want to make an extension of the existing lease under, you know, whatever terms. But as a secondary path, I would like to be prepared to have something in place that we consider an alternative location for leaseholders who want to continue, you know, this, this operation, and then flesh out all the details that are going to be necessary to provide the service. So that is my introduction.
Thank you, Corey. And before we go on, I just want to make a couple points. That, if, as we move ahead, you know, we probably moved ahead for a motion on, to do exactly what he's requested. That's one. And two, it's in our package, but I'll, I'll make a note for the public, you know, fishing uses are permitted in all zoning districts except for municipal conservation, conservation areas, which is, and so what Corey said, as far as, you know, it can be put anywhere, it could be put in anybody's backyard, but it may not be the most efficient way to do it. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sympathetic to try, to trying to find a solution to this. I wanted to ask, in terms of the timing issue, is there anyone on, from the Airport Commission? Is Mr. Harrison by chance? I thought I saw somebody from, I want to know if there's any likelihood from the Airport Commission that an extension could be granted? Because I, the request has been up to a year, that, so we would have some time to try to find some other location. I see Huntley on the screen.
Yep. Yes, I'm here. We will be discussing this at the next commission meeting. We sent our letter out on May 12th to the Select Board, as was noted by Selectman Metters. It wasn't sent out to the fishermen until the 29th of July, so we lost time there. I was working, originally, I was working on 180 days from that May 12th date, or, yeah, May 12th date or May 13th date. And technically, you know, not technically, but, you know, the FAA wants us to shut it down as a wildlife hazard, and, and also the area from a, from our point of view also, has not been kept up as we feel it should be. And so we've got a variety of issues there that we want to remedy. And I, I'm afraid that my, my proposal to the, to the Airport Commission at the next meeting may not be favorable to an extension.
Thank you, Huntley. You're correct, your letter is sent, it's dated the 13th of May. This is the first time I recall having seen this letter. It was addressed to the Select Board, so at least I didn't see it until it was in this packet.
That unfortunately, that's what really is hamstringing this whole, whole operation.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Because no one knew about it until the 29th of July.
Yeah, that, that.
Which shortened the window.
That was not addressed to you, and I just wanted to state that. And we did see some photographs today of the locations, and if, if these items wind up in people's backyards, I think we're going to have a lot of neighborhood complaints about Huntley, is, these are rented, rented, because I understand historically, there, there was no rental, and the FAA required you to, we had a correction plan that required a rental. How much are the rentals, offhand?
Six hundred dollars per year.
Okay.
For a plot.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm looking forward to hearing what others have to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Dean. Jeff?
Yeah, I'm sympathetic as well. I, you know, we've done many surveys of town-owned property over the last few years. We're looking for affordable, attainable housing, looking for RFPs, blah, blah, blah. So it's, I can't imagine we couldn't find another spot to locate some of this stuff, or this stuff. So anyway, I look forward to hearing Terry's.
Yeah, thank you. I, I tend to agree, even with the, the problems we had. I walked that, that property last fall, last spring, and I also walked it another time. And, and, you know, there's, there's pieces of that parcel that are, that you would expect. You have, see a lot of, you see a lot of pots, and you see, you could see where they were all stocked up and they were fine. But there were also a lot of other things that were hidden there that could, that you kind of wonder about and you worry about because some of it could be an environmental issue. So wherever we go next time, fishing gear is fishing gear, and, and that's probably what we have to worry about. That, the pictures that were taken, I get it, but, you know, we're looking for a place we put fishing gear, not everything else. So finish with the board, Corey, you have anything? Okay. I said I'd go over to Terry first, and then we'll go out to the public here, the fishermen that are here, if they want to speak. Terry?
Yeah, good evening, and thanks, Corey, and in perfect with everybody. I think that are all the points in both the staff report and what I was going to point out. So I won't belabor, belabor those points any further. But just to, to follow on a Board Member Metters' comment, so again, we have not done any detailed search. I did have some preliminary maps worked up, and unfortunately, we can't do anything really dynamically this evening. But I, I do want to point out, so I'm going to, if, I'm going to share my screen in a couple of seconds here, and I'll just show you where we did a quick, you know, basic overlay of town-owned parcels, overlaying the water, Water Resource Protection District, and also included a buffer from the airfield, which if you looked at the recommendation in the staff report and the FAA regulations, or, excuse me, the advisory circulator, circular, it indicates that due to, you know, the aircraft at Chatham Airport, it really needs to be sighted, you know, three kilometers or approximately 10,000 feet away from the airport. So it doesn't leave a lot of area, but again, as, as stated, you know, we, we can look at this in a lot more detail. But I'm just going to show a couple of quick, quick graphics here. And like I said, I'm going to go through just a very quick progression. But again, we're not ready to do anything dynamically with the GIS right now. So if you hold on one second here, apologize for. So hopefully, is everybody seeing a map of the, the town with some yellow parcels? Yes. Okay. So again, so that just, again, first, first graphic, and then, you know, from a, again, the real high-level screening, taking those parcels, looking at also not, you know, as an exclusionary area, the Water Resource Protection District or Zone 2. As you can see, that covers a lot of town. And then also, if we put a third level of screen of a 10,000, approximately 10,000 or approximately three kilometer buffer from the airfield, there's minimal areas here that, you know, where we might have our, our search. Again, let's say we can't drill down on the requirements a little more, more deeply as well, but, but that's really the preliminary, very preliminary findings. So again, at first blush here, does that look like there will be a lot of options? But again, if, if directed to do so, we can look at that in much more detail.
Well, let me make a comment. I, I understand that, but I understand we could put fishing gear anywhere we want in town, in any zoning, in any zoning, except for conservation. So, so that's, you know, how that plays against what you said is an issue that's, we have to, you know, discuss. It was, it was, it was Corey, you did, okay, Corey?
Yeah, that was actually my point is, I mean, this is, I guess, a standard, an item that we're going to consider, but the gear can go anywhere with the one exception in the municipal conservation area. So we should clearly, potentially fall within that zone. So, yeah, I just make sure we're clear.
You don't do anything, it could, it would.
It could, it will.
Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Terry, could you put that map up again with the, with the blue and, and the Water Resource So the Water Resource Area, is that a federal or a state mandated, or is that municipal?
That is essentially the, well, it's a DEP-defined boundary, but it also reflects the zoning, the Water Resource Protection District in the zoning bylaw.
Okay. The blue is what?
And that's a, a buffer of the airfield, you know, in compliance with the FAA guidance for the type of aircraft at Chatham Municipal Airport. So on where, you know, not to cite that, you know, wildlife attracted. So the, the determination in the, in the reports primarily that the use is wildlife attracting.
So the ra, the radius of that blue is almost a circle. The radius is dictated by FAA guidance?
Correct.
If you use the airport.
Right, so in the, oh, sorry.
If you use the airport as the center.
Correct, using the airfield, you know, basically the boundaries of the, the paved, paved runway. So that would be something, you know, we would need to drill down a little more on. I, I think the issue is potential, you know, with, we'd probably have to have a discussion with FAA on, on grant assurances, if it were a town-sponsored activity. I know we've been talking about the use being allowed everywhere throughout town, but that would be on private property and not on, on town property, and how that may or may not, you know, interact with grant assurance compliance as far, you know, moving it, say, you know, using the 5,000.
So it's not, not necessarily something that's within exclusive determination of the Airport Commission, but requires potentially approval or acquiescence from the FAA if you place something within that blue zone?
I'm not saying, quite frankly, I'm not sure that, I don't think they would say they would have jurisdiction over it, but they, they might have a, they might have a comment on it.
Okay.
Or take an action.
All right.
It might be a way that I would characterize that.
All right. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Thank you, Dean. Oh, any, anyone in the audience like to speak, or online, any fishermen that are involved? I see a hand in the back. Come up to the mic. You may have to push the button, one of the buttons on the mic to, if it's red, you'll have to be green, and you can take your mask off up there if you, if you prefer.
It's already red, isn't it?
And you're--
It's your most green.
Okay. Okay, and you give your name and so forth.
Yes, good evening, I'm, my name's Jason Hiora. I'm a Chatham resident and a commercial lobsterman in town here, and a longtime tenant of the airport storage facility. Some of this may be redundant now, what I put together, but I'm just going to read through it. So first off, thank you all for the opportunity to speak on this matter. I believe the letters, did everybody receive the, the letters? Okay. You know, so the letters that we submitted to the, to the Select Board and the Airport Commission pretty much states our, our current position. But with that said, I'll just give you a brief description of what we're asking for. So we think the best solution would be the, in the short term, would, would be the extension at the, the existing site. We, we, we just heard that that may, or may not even be a possibility, but a one-year extension or longer, if need be, but at, you know, at the existing site. So, and traditionally, from, from my perspective, there's lots of people involved here, but I, you know, I would have already started to bring some of my gear home already by this point, but I haven't because of the situation. You know, so I really feel up against the wall like I, I never have in over 30 years of lobstering and storing the gear at that, that particular location, you know. So since a lot of us have, us, the tenants, have been there for so long, it's a tough pill to swallow regarding, you know, getting that eviction notice that, that we received. So after speaking with some of the Select Board and the Harbor Master, you know, we've gained, we have gained some support on a couple of different fronts, which, you know, support of the extension itself, and also appropriating funds for the next, this coming fiscal year to, to, to deal with finding, you know, and, and managing and clearing or whatever, another, another site somewhere in town. But ultimately, if we do get rejected by the Airport Commission on the extension, then we're asking for, you know, immediate assistance in finding a temporary, you know, or permanent site to move the gear to, which is, again, very time-sensitive in my case, and I'm just speaking for myself on that note. And, you know, with all due respect, I have to, you know, vehemently disagree with the results of the wildlife study. You know, I don't know too many guys who have spent more time up there, day after day over the past, you know, over the 30-plus years that I've been there. I know about every bird by name up there, and there's not many of them, you know. So that's, in the wildlife thing, there's really nothing up there that's going to attract anything, really, you know? So that's, that's kind of where I'm at, and I just wanted to thank you all for your time. And that's it. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Frank Santoro, Chatham resident, fisherman in town here. I co-authored the letter with Jason and help with my wife. Thanks for your time, and basically, you know, I don't want to waste your time by reiterating everything, but I have been also renting that, that storage space since 2003. I store a pretty fair amount of large, bulky, rusty, I'm a commercial, I mean, I dredge for clams for a living, so I've acquired a large amount of shellfish, dredges, and masts, and booms, and, you know, things that my neighbors, or if you were my neighbor, you don't want to see them in your backyard. So we've really, you know, made good use of that airport storage space, and kind of means a lot to how I based my business over the last 20 years, too. So the biggest problem I'm having is just, you know, I know you mentioned that, you know, six months from May, or six months from July, it could be, there's just no place to go with that amount of gear. I mean, Jason himself, with his large amount, 800 or plus lobster pots, and, you know, out of the area up there, I think it's a 50 by 100. I mean, if I condensed my stuff real tight, I'd probably, maybe three-quarters of the area taken up. It's, it's a large amount of stuff, we're not feasible. You guys know what, how available land is in town and how not available is. Just difficult time in a spot, because I wrote this and I can't see it without my glasses. But just, you know, what, just the same thing, asking the town to consider continuing to accommodate those of us who need the storage area, so their neighbors don't have to see it, and if there's any way to help persuade the Airport Commission to give us an extension on the lease, I mean, they seem to be just kicking us to the side. I know the place, I mean, some of it doesn't look real good, but it's probably pretty good for the amount of maybe fishermen who have gone through there in the last 34 years. And I think the biggest problem up there, as far as scrap and stuff, is illegal dumping. So, you know, maybe a new storage area could probably be ruled and managed. Not that we all want more rules and stuff, but maybe a little better, that's all. I'm not going to take up any more of your time, but thanks for listening.
No, thank you very much. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Frank, and Jason. If we, how many, how many square feet do the fishermen need that are still interested in using a municipal storage area? How many square feet in total? Just, we, we kind of need that, we need some data. So if you guys that want to, you know, want to store stuff, how much space do you need? That'd be my first--
Yeah, sure.
Up to Peter. I mean, how many square feet is it?
Go ahead, Terry.
Yeah, and Stuart chimed in, and I see the Harbor Minister's on as well. But, but essentially, the plots are 5,000 square feet per, per fisherman, and I believe where, we have nine active now with, I think somebody's sharing one. So, you know, that would be the baseline. So over the years, the original number, I believe, was 15, 15 plots, and Stuart can maybe correct me on the exact management of where we are with the number, but that's where I believe we are right now, is nine active plots.
Somewhere between an acre and two acres?
Yeah, nine 5,000 is 45,000, and so it's, you know--
Yeah, so just under an acre.
A little, little over, and about an--
A little over, right?
Over an acre, 1.2, 1.3, okay. So, I mean, that's a place--
Over an acre, and you would need some circulation, and, you know, again, depending on what type of environment we're in or not, you know, as far as, you know, what elements we need to either screen or shield, whatever, you know, that, that would be something we would work through at the staff level to come up with a, a proposal.
So I, I have some initial thoughts, Mr. Chairman. Number one, I think the course of least resistance is, we've, you've requested an extension for the Airport Commission, let's see what they say. I would like to ask the Airport Commission to please ask the FAA whether or not granting an extension for a year will cause any undue harm to either airport operations or the wildlife. Knowing that we'll have a solution in a year, so I think, I would like to ask Huntley and the Airport Commission to please entertain the notion of asking the FAA if they, if they think as though they don't have permission, if you will, I'd like to, I'd like to at least make sure that the FAA says it absolutely has to be done. That's number, number one, and number two. Number three, I would like to ask the town to perform a search, looking for an acre and a half of land that will take, you know, fishermen's gear. I mean, the notion that Jason's got pots out there and he hasn't brought them in yet is, that's significant. So what's he going to do, have his pots sit out there all year? Is he going to put them in the backyard? 800 traps is a lot of traps, and it takes up a lot of space, and they're smelly, at least especially to start. So, so anyway, I think it's, I think it behooves us to try to, try to help these guys out, try to help the industry out. Backbone of this town?
Thank, thank you, Jeff, and I have just a comment, too. Like I said, I walked that, I think the comment that was made, that, that, you know, a lot of the, the fishing gear that's there, you can see it, you know, it's rusted and so forth, but that's fishing gear. And, and the point was, it was illegal dumping, and he's absolutely correct, and that's something that can be controlled. The second point is, you know, I understand that the Airport Commission is, and I understand FAA rules very, you know, very well, and I, I support all that. However, you know, we're talking about a major business and industry in our town, and FAA, you know, that FAA, if I understood Terry correctly, that blue circle was maybe a recommendation for, you know, private land or whatever. Well, I, you know, we already have bylaws and we're a fishing village, for God, for heaven's sakes. And, and, you know, all the, all the fishing gear could be put right in their, in the person's backyard, and, and I think it behooves the town of us to try to help them with that. And I, I would like to, you know, I wasn't expecting Huntley to be on, only because that issue is a, is a commission issue. They have to make a decision on whether they do that. But I would encourage that they, if they don't have a suspense date from FAA, or if they do, that they think about that, they think about the town, they think about the businesses that we're involved with and the people that are involved with. And I understand that the, the two-month delay or month delay that happened from May to July, I can understand how that would impact it, but guess what? Where is all that fishing gear in July? It's in the water. Nobody's going to be able to move it until it comes out later. Now, I know things move and go between different areas, but the point is, they're in a business. So I think we need to, to consider all those things. Our part will be, do we want to go ahead with what the town should do? And then that'll be a discussion or a vote that we'll take. Corey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple thoughts. One, even if the Airport Commission grants an extension, we still know the use of that property will be terminated shortly, whether it be immediately or in six months or a year. So finding a secondary or an alternative location, it appears this board has some appetite to explore and, and support and move forward on. So I think that process should start immediately, knowing that an extension may, may or may not occur, but there is going to be a transition point at some point. We are kind of against the clock a little bit. You know, I know there's some argument with the 180 days falling from the Airport Commission's letter in May, or the town manager's letter on July 29th. So I think we maybe get some clarification on that from a process perspective, but I'd like to try to see if we can identify, right now, I want to stay focused on a temporary, you know, location, so we can get through this season. Deal with that first, and then look at the long-term solutions. They may be wanting the same, but I'd like to at least kind of be focused on finding a, a short-term solution in a timely manner as possible, because as Selectman Dykens has mentioned, you know, the, the equipment's out there, and if it doesn't stay out there, it's going to come in, and it's probably going to come in, in their yards, and they're going to have to do the best they can to accommodate their, you know, maybe a limited amount of space to store them. So whatever we can do to help, I'm very supportive of, and I just want to do this in a timely manner as possible.
Thank you, Corey. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we know from our recent joint meeting with the Airport Commission that the Board of Selectmen, the Select Board can't tell the Airport Commission what to do, but we certainly can, can offer our thoughts and make a request. And with that in view, and picking up comments that are made, I, by others, I, I think I'd like to offer a motion that the Select Board send a communication to the Airport Commission requesting an extension of this termination of the leases of, of, of one year. I, and see what they do with it. And I, the second part of the motion is to, is to ask the town staff to explore the possibilities for a more permanent solution, as Selectman Matters, Select Board Member Matters has outlined. I think that encapsulates, am I missing something, Mr. Dykens?
You know, thank you, Selectman Castro, Select Board Member Castro. I would second that, but I would also put a time-limited caveat on the response from the town on the availability of spots, locations, potential locations. I think we got a week or two, and that's, we gotta, you gotta crank this up a little bit.
Do you want to amend the motion?
I'd like to say I'd like the town to respond within two weeks.
I'll include that in the motion.
Corey?
I'm just, no, I'm fine with that. I would also request that the town just reach out to all the lease over, lease holders to confirm who or which, which, how many are interested in this proposal, so we know how to kind of determine number of, and, you know, match the parcel location to the needs, so.
Yeah, make a difference in how big--
Excellent. I seconded it, yeah, yeah.
Did I get a second?
I, I seconded it, yeah, absolutely.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you. Okay. Next is Summer Residents Advisory Committee. Mr. Rotner. Is that our new resident with you, or?
Thank you very much for inviting the summer residents--
Welcome.
--to bring you up to date, Mr. Chairman. With me is John O'Toole, who spearheaded the capital projects prioritization part of the work of the summer residents this summer, and is the person most able to, to present it and answer any questions that you may have. John did a wonderful job with this project. I think you can see from the, the report that was submitted, and frankly, we're really going to miss him because he's transitioned from being a summer resident to a full-time resident, and the summer residents' loss is the town's gain. So we are going to miss him. I just want to start by thanking the, so many of the town personnel who assisted us this summer, and I want to publicly be able to state that here tonight. They include Stephen Daniel, the Finance Committee Chairperson, Alex Alia, the Finance Director, Peter Kukulas from the Select Board, Shereen Davis, Select Board, Tom Temple, the Director of DPW, Robert Duncanson, the Director of Natural Resources, Kathleen Donovan, Director of Community Development, Ali Sabatino, Town Planner, Ted Keon, Director of Coastal Resources, all of whom provided invaluable information and support. The summer residents this summer looked at various topics. We looked at the waterways, proposed waterways bylaws that the Waterways Advisory Committee is working on, and I will speak on that shortly. We looked at the prioritization of capital projects, John O'Toole will address that. We looked at the charter review that's ongoing, and I will address you with respect to the summer residents' recommendations on that. We looked at the residential tax exemption again, and I will not address you on that tonight, as Mr. Waters from our committee has already done that, and it would be totally redundant and for us to do that and unnecessary now, and that's already taken place. But I did include it in the report as a matter of just keeping the record straight. We looked at affordable housing, as we've been doing for several years. Phil Richardson spearheads that, that was presented at the annual summer town meeting, and again, it's included in your report, but I don't think it's necessary to review that tonight. And we started a review of the wastewater, which the summer residents have been active in since 2003, in the sewer-ing of the town. And one of the things that we learned in the process of reviewing that this summer is that we don't know enough about hookups and how the town is proceeding with the actual hookups, and what can be done to assist people in hooking up to the sewer. We didn't get to that this summer, because that's some of what we discovered this summer, but that is on our agenda for next summer, to take a deep dive into the sewer hookups. So with that, I'd like to get to the proposed waterways bylaw. And that has a little history that goes along with this. And that has a little history that goes along with this. This came to the attention of the summer residents in 2017, when the Harbor Master proposed changes in his regulations. I think, I, I know I appeared before the Select Board on behalf of the summer residents. I can't recall whether it was 2017 or 2018. But I appeared on behalf of the summer residents because we were opposing those regulations that the Harbor Master was proposing, having to do with moorings. And we opposed them for two reasons. One, they were inconsistent with the town bylaws. And two, they reduced the, in our view, they reduced the transparency in the whole mooring assignment process compared to what was in the bylaws. Eventually, the bylaws were adopted, and the board charged the Waterways Committee with reviewing the issue and retained Attorney Quizzle as special counsel to help with that And now we're at the point where the Waterways Committee has been working on the process, and what they've done is proposed amendments to the bylaws. Now, in considering the bylaws, I think it's very important to go back and look at the 2008 town meeting where these bylaws were adopted. And I want to read from the, I'm not sure, the, the, the handout, for lack of a better word, that all the citizens get for the articles on the town meeting. And with respect to the particular article at that town meeting having to do with the bylaws, this was the summary in support of the article. And I'm, I'm going to read from it, because I think it's important. In 2000, in December of 2000, in December of 2006, the Massachusetts Inspector General issued an eight-page report to the Board of Selectmen. The report investigation was to determine whether private boatyards in Chatham were operating lawfully and fairly with respect to their control of moorings and public waters. Included in this investigation report was the recommendation that the town of Chatham, through its Harbor Master, take all necessary and appropriate steps to assert control over all new and vacant mooring spaces in town waters that are currently controlled by private entities. Subsequent to the addition, to the issuance of this report, the Board of Selectmen directed the Waterways Advisory Committee to propose changes or amendments to the Waterways bylaw that would address the issues raised by the Inspector General, and, and this is where it becomes important, other changes that may be appropriate. After considerable televised meetings by the Waterways Advisory Committee, that included representatives of the boatyards, comments from the general public, the Coastal Resources Director, and the Harbor Master, the proposed changes have been accepted by the Waterways Advice, Advisory Committee, and subsequently written into bylaw form by town council. The additions and amendments and deletions are contained in various sections. The changes provide oversight to the boatyards' rental moorings, additional publications of waiting lists, and in addition to the statutory appeal process, provides an additional local appeal process for those persons aggrieved by the decision of the Harbor Master. I think you can see that there was considerable deliberations that went into these bylaws that were adopted in 2008. Therefore, SRAQ believes it behooves the town and the Board of Selectmen, before the board were to make any recommendations to the town, to make any changes or bylaw articles at town meeting changes these bylaws, that the specific bylaws which are proposed to be amendment, to be amended, not only be identified, but because of what went into this, because they were approved at town meeting, and because they are bylaws, that the proponent of any changes identified the precise problem with the existing bylaw, which is sought to be amended, and explained how the proposed changes would correct the problem. I think that only makes sense. If we're going to amend a set of bylaws, then why are we amending them, and what is the problem? So I think an example of what one of the proposed bylaws will help to explain this. If you look to your packet that I, that we provided, Appendix A, the first bylaw that was addressed was 26515G. This is the bylaw that pertains to what happens when you're passed over on the waiting list. Now, the word "passed over" is not in here anywhere. It's sort of colloquially a way of saying what the bylaw is addressing. The proposed bylaw says, "All new assignments of moorings shall be taken from the first suitable vessel on the waiting list." What could make more sense? We have a mooring that can take a 25-foot boat, or whatever other conditions of suitability. The first person that meets the criteria on the waiting list gets the mooring. What could be fairer? If the vessel selected for the mooring is not the next suitable vessel, and that's what the amendment adds, "suitable vessel," the bylaw just said, "not the next vessel," in line on the wait, waitlist, the Harbor Master shall provide a written reason for the selection to those who have been passed over, essentially. So what does the amendment do? The proposed amendment says, if I'm number one on the waiting list, and I have a 27-foot boat, but the Harbor Master determines that's not suitable, and goes to number two on the waiting list, who has a 25-foot boat, then certainly he should give it to the next suitable vessel, number two, because it's, the Harbor Master's determined that's the vessel that's suitable. But the problem is, notice is not given to the next person in line. It's only given if you were the next suitable vessel. So what happens? What happens if it's given to the next person in line? Why is that so important, that number one, who had a 27-foot boat, who the Harbor Master says doesn't fit? Why does he need the notice? One is just simple matter transparency. Number one deserves to know that number two got the mooring, just so he understands and has confidence in the process. Secondly, number one should have the opportunity to go see the Harbor Master, or even take an appeal if he wants, by that local appeal bylaw, says, you know, a 27-foot boat will really fit in there. It shouldn't go to number two with the 25-foot boat. My 27-foot boat will fit in the space. And he can appeal that, but not if he doesn't get notice. That's why it should be to, notice is to the next in line, not the next suitable, who is passed over. As part of this process, we had discussions with the Harbor Master's office, and it was explained to us, if a person has a mooring, by way of example, with a 25-foot boat, and that's the suitable vessel, if that person who already holds a mooring decides to buy a 27-foot boat, they will work with them to try to squeeze it in to that spot. Give the person who is number one with the 27-foot boat a chance. And finally, maybe person who's number one doesn't even have a boat. He just, his dream boat was the 27-foot boat. He's waiting to get the mooring before he goes and invests all that money in his boat. But you know, now that he's got a mooring and he's waited all these years, it's just going to have to be a 25-foot boat, or whatever it is. And fairness says that that person get the mooring. You know, I would suggest to you that this is exactly what was being contemplated in 2008, when the bylaws were adopted. This was the problem that the town was seeing in the transparency and how to react to this situation. This, you know, I perfectly understand, I don't mean to be critical of the Harbor Master. I perfectly understand why he's going to the next suitable boat and how this is done. But for the person on the other line who's being passed over, he really needs, that person needs the information.
Hey, Joel.
Yes.
You know, just, I don't want to stop it, but you provided this to the Waterways Committee.
We did.
Yeah, okay. Because the Waterways Committee still hasn't decided what they're going to do yet.
No, and I'm going to get to that. That's why, what I, that's why what I'm here to say tonight is, that was by way of an example. What I'm here to really say to you tonight is to make the recommendation from the summer residents, that when these changes come to you, that you seek from the Waterways Committee the problem with the existing bylaw and the reason for the change. Now, to some people, that may seem complicated, and I'd suggest that this is a very easy issue. You've already hired Attorney Quizzle. What person, who is not in a better position and with better experience and expertise to present that for each recommendation? She's been working with the Waterways Committee. You can ask or require, she's your lawyer, you've retained her, you pay her fees. You can just go out and tell Attorney Quizzle, "We want to know what's the problem with each recommendation and why this is a solution, and then we can go to town meeting with full confidence that there's reasons for these changes." Now, this is the basic recommendation on the Waterways, because, Mr. Kukulas, Mr. Chairman, as you said, we're hoping that the Waterways Committee listens to some of our criticisms of this, and that we're not going to be at this point, and that we're not going to be coming back and, and having to address the Select Board again when they come before the Select Board. It's interesting, though, that when you think about this process of what's the problem, this is the same recommendation that we made with respect to the Charter Revision. We made two recommendations to the Charter Revision Commission. The first one is, we should, the Charter should do away with the periodic review. And the reason for that is, because if there's a problem with the Charter, there's a process to initiate amendments to the Charter. And it's not very complicated, and you can initiate, initiate it, and it will be with respect to a defined problem. Define the problem with your existing governing documents, and then come up with a solution. Our second recommendation to the Charter Revision Commission was, if you don't like that, at least make the review, you know, much lengthier. Every five years is too quick. You're just opening up a can of worms. With that, I would turn this over to Mr. O'Toole, who can bring us up to date on, on the prioritization.
Thank you. Unless you'd like to... Thank you, Joel. Welcome, John.
Thank you. It's good to be here as an alumnus of the SRAQ operation for the last several years. So as Joel mentioned, I chaired a small subcommittee this past summer, and its charge was to look at the process by which the town prioritizes capital items. We chose to focus on capital items that were embodied in warrant articles rather than dealing with the larger class of capital items, some of which are dealt with in the, referred to as in-budget capital items that are funded out of the operating budget. So we're focused only on warrant-based capital items. As we looked into it, one of the reasons we chose this process, this area to investigate was, it was unclear to us what that process was. We were familiar with the Collins Center Report. However, we chose to dig into the process a little more deeply to sort of understand the full process. And in the course of doing that, we found it to be a very thorough and thoughtful process. A centerpiece of that is, in fact, the Collins Center Report, which calls for the Select Board to look at a number of criteria, as well as policy areas, and review those against all of the capital items that are presented during the budget review. Our assessment was that the Select Board does a very solid job of using the Collins Report to guide them through that process. We also applaud the Select Board for establishing a goal of having an agenda item at a Select Board meeting toward the end of the year, where the prioritization process is presented to the, to the townsfolk. During the course of our work in reviewing the capital item prioritization process, we did find a number of things that we would like to offer three recommendations on and make a, an observation on yet another topic. Our first recommendation is, in the view of the committee, that the prioritization process is well thought out, but we think that the citizens of the town may not be well informed of what the work involved is that the Select Board undertakes. Finance Department publishes a large amount of detailed information, which is available on the town website, but may not be easily digestible by the average citizen. We think that some level of a higher-order chart covering a number of different aspects of the capital items would be helpful. In particular, we would recommend that the town publish and keep updated a summary chart, which includes three categories. One would be a list of warrant-based items with a description of the budget items that are in the planning stage and may appear in the warrant in the next three years. A second item that we would recommend is that the town maintain a list of warrant-based capital items that have been approved by town meeting, but that have not yet commenced, to include the cost, the estimated start date, and the estimated completion date. And then the third item in that chart would be a list of all warrant-based capital projects that are underway with a current status, including cost and forecasted completion date. We think that organizing that chart into some logical organizational scheme, such as projects that are aimed at the waterfront, projects aimed at safe drinking water, and so forth, makes a lot of sense as well. The key is to keep that chart updated over the course of time, to keep the residents of the town kind of informed on a current basis. A second recommendation involves some talk that we've heard about the establishment of a, a new and separate standing committee that would review all capital projects. In looking around the State Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we find those kinds of committees, a standing committee to review capital projects, are not universal, but common. Our subcommittee believes that Chatham has all the right people involved in the prioritization process, and a new committee is not necessary in the town of Chatham. We think that if a specific project might benefit by review of a separate committee, the Select Board can appoint an ad hoc committee who can carry out that task. There's precedent for that. The town has done that for the community center and for the fire station. Our third recommendation involves the Finance Committee's involvement in reviewing capital project items. There's no question that the Finance Committee provides an important voice in consideration of warrant-based capital items. They publish a report in the town meeting warrant and vote on all of the capital items, so there's no question about that. We found, we concluded that the opinion of the Finance Committee tends to come very late in the budget process, and we think it would be useful if the views of the Finance Committee were to be made known to the public. Committee were to be made known to the public earlier in the process as another element of guidance that help, would help the townspeople consider what their views on a particular item might be. Finally, I'll call an observation rather than a recommendation. We find that the town budget process tends to focus on individual warrant-based capital items. Some of the town's capital projects are part of a larger vision or a strategic plan. One great example of that is the wastewater project. A number of years ago, there was a master plan put in place that was well-defined, it was forward-looking, the town's been doing a fantastic job on implementing that. And numerous capital projects have been approved without much controversy in the wake of that over a large number of years. On the other side of the coin, there are other project areas, such as the waterfront, which does not seem to have a strategic or a master plan, and the, the town's ability to deal with projects that crop up in that world is, is not nearly as smooth as in the wastewater area. For example, the, a couple of years ago, town passed the waterfront bond issue, which contemplated a, a number of projects, most of which I think have been funded. However, many of those showed no sequencing or coordination with one another. They were a series of individual projects that did not sort of fit in a larger master plan. We think that a master plan or strategic vision would have helped guide the townspeople to look more differently at some of those projects. You know, in summary, the, we found that the warrant article capital item prioritization process begins and ends with the Select Board, which is as it should be. The Select Board expends a significant amount of energy on capital item prioritization and has implemented a thoughtful and well-thought-out prioritization process. We think the key task is converting that process into a limited list of cost-controlled projects coordinated to meet the town's most pressing needs. Thank you for the opportunity to share that.
Thank you, John. I just want to quickly circle back before we complete, before we finish our presentation. I didn't want to leave you with the impression that that was the only bylaw which we questioned, the one about passing over. But as, Mr. Chairman, you noted, this process is ongoing. We don't know what the final result will look like, and I want to say that we were invited and met with the Waterways Advisory Committee, so we were able to present our input to them, and for that, we are very grateful. And who knows what will come out of this process? So the, still the main recommendation remains, as our charge is to make recommendations to Board of Selectmen, that the, if there are changes, that the problem be identified and the solution be presented. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. Any questions? This is terrific.
Any, any questions, comments? Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Joel, John, thank you so much. I appreciate your input. Joel, when you presented in front of the Waterways Committee, did you make that specific recommendation of the clarity of bylaw changes that be foremost in any, any recommendations they have coming back to the town? I think that, I think that's an excellent point, and I think it's spot-on, to be honest with you.
I can't say that we did not specifically make that recommendation to them. However, as part of our presentation, we asked them to tell us what the problem was with the bylaw that they were seeking to amend, and why the proposed bylaw amendment satisfied or answered the question. And we have not had a response, and that particular evening, they reserved, as was their right, to hear from us, and then we didn't.
Sure.
They weren't responding that night.
And just a quick follow-up, your, your suggestion that that'd be a charge through Attorney Quessel was a good one, and likely follow-up on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shereen, and then, well, let's see, I wasn't sure which was first. Corey, and then Dean. Shereen.
Joel, thank you, and you for the presentation on the capital projects and the wastewater as well. I'm just going to double back to the Waterways. Obviously, that was started quite a few years ago. Transparency and communication's always been an issue with, with the bylaws and regulations with that, and Waterways is working on it. We always have this presumed rationale about, you know, everybody has their own presumed rationale about why something has changed or changed, so I really appreciate the fact that you've actually said, you know, let's look at why there's a problem there and what the solution is. It's spot-on. It really is spot-on. And it's the same with the Charter Review Committee. If it isn't broken, don't, you know, don't try to fix it. I mean, it makes sense. And we've struggled with timing on that committee for quite some time, and hopefully, they'll come out with some really good recommendations that are simple and to the point, as we had directed, you know, previously. So, thank you so much for your time and attention to a lot of details of the town of Chatham during, you know, arguably the best time of year to, nobody really wants to be sitting down doing the due diligence that you've done, but thank you very much for that.
Thank you very much, and I would just take this opportunity to say, getting back on the problem and the solution, that with respect to the Waterways bylaws, the problem isn't that, shouldn't be, that they don't coincide with the regulations. The question is, the bylaw itself, does that have a problem? Not, we want to make it conform to the regulations.
Corey?
Thank you.
No, I was thinking very briefly. I mean, as the liaison to the Waterways Advisory Committee, and we've recognized it, it's still an ongoing process. We've got a special counsel, Amy Quessel, you know, as a resource, they're meeting, they're getting input from the other Waterway-related committees, SREC and everyone, and the public. So hopefully, we're going to get to the point where we're going to have a public hearing and kind of, really kind of flush things out, and, oh, you know, fingers crossed, let's get this into the May Annual Town Meeting so we can take some action on a final draft, because I think a lot of people are waiting for, have been waiting for this a long time. So, you know, it's in process, and we're hoping to get it queued up for this, for this May Town Meeting, and finally put some of this, hopefully, you know, come out to a resolution on some, on some of these items, so we can really move forward, so.
Thank you. I'd say we second that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Joel. Thank you, John. I appreciate the report and the work that your committee does, and welcome, John, as a year-round resident now. I just wanted to say, ask, did you also make a presentation or submit or comments to the Charter Review Committee?
We submitted comments to the Charter Review Committee.
Okay, great. And I, I think that, as others have said, you know, we, we engaged independent expert counsel to assist in this process on the, on the Waterways bylaws and, and regulations, and the idea was to make sure they're working well together, those two documents, reconciled appropriately, and also to suggest whatever revisions might be necessary. So I know there is a draft that's circulated. I haven't personally examined it. I wanted to see what the final recommendation is coming to us from the Waterways Committee after they've had reviews by the other water, water-related committees. But I think the principle that you outlined to, and that Shereen, I'm sorry, Shereen commented on with respect to the Charter Review Committee, and she served on the Charter Review, the last Charter Review Committee, I believe, is a good one to make sure we understand what the problem is, and if there is one, and, you know, why, whether the solution that's being proposed addresses that problem adequately. That's something that this, this board will look at with respect, not just the Waterways, but the Charter Review recommendations that come, come forward to us as well. And I think that's not an unreasonable thing, and I suspect members of the Waterways Committee would, would agree with that principle. So I, I just, and you'll have an opportunity when both of those items are brought before us to weigh in as well. And I do remember, I think it was 2018, because I think I was chairman at the time. We had the meeting where you spoke.
That's right. You were chairman at the time.
So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dean, and let me add my congra, thank you, and congratulations to get through this summer. You had a, you had a pretty hectic time during that, and you had a large amount, number of things you, you do. And if, I don't know if anybody understands it, but you put out a, put out a, your recommendations, you know, just building this takes time, and you're doing it as summer residents, and we really appreciate that. Appreciate the, we don't always like to hear what independent people say, but it's actually comes in handy, and it's very good to, to hear it, and I just, I'm, I think there's a, since I was, since I've been here, the Summer Residents Committee has been, been, been around, and I appreciate everything that, that you do, and especially all the volunteering. And now that we have John, boy, imagine what we can do now, huh, John? Thank you. He's, he's chair of the Bicycle Committee, and I think, we still are, right?
I am, and I'll be back before you here, I think, in the next few months on a couple of projects.
Super. Well, thank you both, and thanks again.
Thank you, Al.
Okay, let's move on now to a project update on 365 Main Street, and I'll turn it over to Katie.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just, I'll just provide a very brief overview, and then I'm going to turn it over to Kurt Raber from Catalyst Architects, our consultant. But just as the, as the board will recall, the Eldridge Garage Property Planning Committee had made recommendations to the board in November of 2018, and based on those recommendations, we sought funding at the, for design at the 2019 Annual Town Meeting. Through an RFQ, we hired Catalyst Architects, formerly BLFR, who was also working with Coastal Engineering and Olmsted Design as part of the design team. And staff and the consultant were before you in January of this year, seeking guidance on the design. Based on input at that meeting, the consultant will provide an update, updated plans to you this evening. However, since the funding for the overall project was not requested at the June 2021 Annual Town Meeting, based upon the outcome of that January 19th meeting, and in order to meet and identify priority of addressing the flooding in the vicinity, along vicinity of that area along Main Street, staff requested funds be included in the Annual Town Meeting Stormwater Capital Article to allow for accelerated correction of a broader drainage issues in the right-of-way to be completed separately from the overall project. The schedule for this work is in the staff report, but is anticipated to be completed by mid-December. Tonight, the consultant and staff are looking for consensus from the board members to move this preliminary conceptual design forward toward completing, completion regarding project specifics, including restrooms, the number and mix of restrooms, design elements, and any other desired features to be considered, added to a revised conceptual plan for presentation and approval at a subsequent meeting. Once the conceptual plan is revised, based on the consensus items noted above, staff will return to the board with a project, with project cost estimates and timeline for construction for consideration on how to move forward toward implementation. Would also like to make you aware that town officials were contacted by a property owner in that area who would like to make a donation to the town toward the funding of this project. The specifics of the donation have not been ironed out, but we'll have, but we will come back to you with the donation agreement for acceptance at a, at a future meeting, once those terms are, again, I end out. So I'd like to now turn over, turn this over to Kurt Raber from Catalyst Architects.
Hello, Kurt. Welcome. You're on mute.
On mute. There we go. Hello, good evening. I'm Kurt Raber from Catalyst Architects, and thanks for inviting me to participate in your meeting and show you some, some revised plans, and talk a little bit about the intent of the project going forward. I'd like to share my screen. Can you all see?
Yes, we can.
All right, so this is, should be for later. This is a part of a couple slides, the first three slides would be part of the presentation that we showed you several months ago, back in January, in fact. So this is an older site plan that was conceived by the Eldridge Property Working Group a couple of years ago, and Jay Olmsted worked on this with that committee and came up with a site plan that basically left the little garage building that's left on the site now in its place, and developed a parking lot and some open green space along Main Street. We then, part of our charge and under our contract, went out and measured the existing building in detail, drew up elevations of the existing building and the plan of the existing building, and this is just sort of the open former retail space. There's a little office and a little restroom and a little storage room that faces the parking lot now, and I think that this space is used by the valet tenant. This is switching over to kind of a refined plan. We'd like to shake up the design a little bit, and if I zoom in, you can see this broken red line here, in this crosshatched area, is the existing location of the Eldridge Garage Building, and was also the, you know, the same location as proposed in the previous plan. We'd like to propose that to pick it up and move it forward towards Main Street, and in doing so, can kind of clean up the flow around the parking lot. If I jump back to the other plan, you'll notice that the building interrupted the flow of the parking lot and kind of two-way traffic, and kind of made it kind of difficult to maneuver through. The parking lot also had sort of a one-way in and a one-way out. In the proposed plan, we propose a single driveway cut, a little bit more green space, and a sort of a two-way traffic around. We do achieve 67 parking spaces. In the building location, it does move from about 20 feet from the street to about six or seven feet from the street, and we think that that's, you know, okay, and for its use, probably, you know, pretty practical and familiar, because just up the street, a couple of addresses is the, you know, sort of the bottom of the retail end of, of Main Street, and that setback is allowable here, and, like I said, familiar. The site has handicap parking, proposed electric charging station for electrical cars. Over here, hidden under the shade trees, would be the bicycle repair station, which might have tools and an air pump. Again, we've kind of filled out the corners of the building, be a little bit more rectangular, and when I show you the proposed plan, again, not much has changed here since we last saw you, but we'd like to kind of straighten out the main mass of the building in a full rectangle, which is infilling this corner. And we're also kind of using that office area and dividing this up a little bit differently. In the back, we end up with, again, a covered porch area for a valet, if the town continues to use a service to operate the parking lot, and a little storage space for them. And then in the heart of the building, we have the front door facing Main Street, but we'd like to create another cupboard entrance and come into an indoor public area where you could have an emergency kind of location to charge your electronic devices, a water bottle filler, and then we have a custodial space, and here we're showing three restrooms. Building like this in a public facility would be required to have a men's room and a women's room. Here, we're showing three separate toilet rooms. One would be women's, a men's, and then a family, with a little bit extra room for a baby carriage, diaper changing station. But this also gives somebody who wanted to assist a family member that perhaps had some inventory issues or mobility issues, two people could go in here, and then kind of in the back corner, that is, again, more mechanical space. So the quantity and, you know, of, and breakup of the bathrooms is, is open for debate, and we'd, you know, appreciate your comments tonight. Finally, slightly different roof elevation to the building when we create the L, but what we're proposing is a renovation, a remodeling project. We've been through the building a couple of times. We've been through the building a couple of times and we're concerned about the level of deterioration in the building. In particular, the old wooden building sets down at grade and is sort of buried into the grade with the asphalt parking lot all around it. Moisture has just attacked the building, so there's a lot of rot of the wooden sill that sits into the grade. So we propose to pick the building up, remove any of that rot at the sill, set the building down on its new foundation and its new location, and then in, inside the building, remodel it by sistering almost every structural member. So every wall stud would get a adjacent one to increase the building height by about six to 12 inches. And the roof frame would also be reinforced and make it kind of suitable and compliant with the current building code and wind loads and other ratings. We would keep the same overhang details and as you can see in our building here, the current building has exposed rafter tails. So some of these features, we want to just keep and embellish. At the back, I'm showing you that proposed back porch on the building where the parking service could be operated under cover in inclement days. So very, very similar building shape and size, just sort of refined and cleaned up a little bit. But window details would be the two-over-one, sort of this Victorian, kind of old-school gas station design and, and we would, you know, embellish those details. Again, let me bounce back to the proposed floor plan and then the proposed site plan. So very simply, we're wondering if sort of this revised plan is receptive to the comments we heard back in January and kind of meets with the town's needs going forward and we'd be open to your questions.
Thank you, Kurt. Let's see. We have both Dean and Shereen were on the committee, I believe, right? Before I go to them, let me say, generally, personally, I'm going to, normally I wouldn't do it, but I'm going to do it this time. I kind of, I like the, the way you move, in the direction you're moving. And you say rebuild or renovate, and I, and the historical guys are going to go after me. You're going to put new beams up, but basically keep the same structure?
Right.
Does that make sense from a cost sense? But I, I like the idea of remodeling, but is, does it make sense, I guess?
Right. And if I could comment that-
Sure, please do.
True, true history, historians might want to hear the word restoration. We think the building's sort of deteriorated and, and needs more than a restoration. A true restoration would be to pick up the building, leave the fabric that's there, including the windows, the siding, the roofing, or replace in kind with those things. We think that the building needs a new foundation, will house kind of new services that needs to meet the new building code. So we want to have a building that can be plumbing hot and cold water, insulated so that it's operable in three seasons or maybe even four. And hard to do that in a restored, kind of antique building. So what we're proposing is a remodeling that is a sort of replica, if you will.
Okay, that's what I thought you said.
Embellish the old details.
Okay, thank you. Let me start with Dean, then Shereen, Jeff, and Corey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the presentation. As, as you pointed out, Peter, Shereen and I both served on the special Eldridge Garage Committee and along with seven other prominent citizens and others in the town. And a number of us were involved leading up to that in the acquisition of the property. And for reasons of COVID and budgeting, you know, the project has been delayed somewhat, but we did receive a very thoughtful list of recommendations from the committee and the select board endorsed it going forward. And now we're, we're proceeding along those lines. And I do think we owe it to the, to a number of people who worked on this, including the Eldridge family, which sold the property, property to the town at a very reasonable cost. And, and to the various citizens who expressed interest in preserving the historical value of the property and the committees, the boards, the HBDC and Historical Commission, which worked on it as well. And I would also acknowledge the assistance that we got in acquiring the property from Mr. Oppenheim and others. So I think we, we owe it to everyone to try to move this forward. The committee basically came up with a tripartite use of the property. One, one is to preserve the garage, the gas station, I'll call it, sorry, the gas station. The other was parking. And the third was to preserve the, the rear as open space and that's with a, in lowercase. It's not going to be formally dedicated as an open space parcel, but it would be left pristine. And sort of attendant to that and consistent with the concerns of the neighbors to address the drainage issues. And that drainage piece, as Katie mentioned, is on track for substantial completion in December. And I think everybody's going to be happy to hear that under the funding that we voted at town meeting recently. I do think it's important, and I would sound a note of caution, to make sure that this is not a rebuilding. We're not knocking the building down. We're moving it under your proposal and, and as you say, remodeling it. But I think we have to be very attentive to the historical interests of the community, which were reflected in the determination of the historic business district commission's determination that this building should be preserved and could not be knocked down. So I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I would like to see us preserve historically as much as we can of this. I, I'm not so, I'm not sure I have any issue with moving it, with putting a foundation under it. I think you have to. And, and addressing items such as rotted boards and things like that. The other interesting feature that Katie mentioned is that there is a potential donor. And I think that really adds a lot to the, the project because this is going to be an expensive project either way. And with all the other needs we have in the town, we don't want to be going to town meeting looking for huge amounts of money. And if we can get some private donation here, as well as tap into CPC funds on the restoration side or preservation side, I think we should. So there may have to be some adjustment to, you know, the actual model that you're proposing. And I think the goal should be to try to reach a mutual, a mutually agreeable resolution that allows us to tap into the private donation consistently with what the town wants to do. The only other open question I have is on the restrooms because when you presented back in January or so, that was a significant concern because that was a big part of the, of the price ticket on this. And whether we want any restrooms or some, I'm not sure we want all three. I don't know. It's nice to think of having the family restroom in there as well, but that, I'm not sure where I come down on that at the present time. But I, I'm very supportive, obviously, of moving this project forward, as I think the, the rest of the board is. But those, those are my observations. I don't have any specific questions, but I, I really come down very solidly on trying to preserve the historic aspect of, of the gas station as much as we possibly can. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dean. Let's see, Shereen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I echo a lot of select board member Castro's thoughts on, on our past work and, and our future work and appreciation of a potential donor for, for the project. The other piece that I think that Dean might not have mentioned was in the committee wanting to see this as a visitor center, if you remember that. And I think that this is where we can really speak to what Eldridge Garage was in the past, which was a gas station. And that maybe we look at creating simply a family toilet room instead of three and do something that is a little more robust inside, that depicts era, a certain era of transportation in the town in some sort of wall displays, also resting benches indoors, a place where people can get in, sit if it's, you know, if they're waiting for transportation, like with the shuttle or, and it's hot outside, or, you know, just want to view some of the history of the, of the town. I, I want to be really sensitive to, I, I don't have any problem moving the, the, the building per se, but I want to be sensitive to costs here too. And I think that if we, you know, if it's, if it's, if it's absolutely necessary to have to do it, then we do it. But if it's not, then maybe this is something where the, that flow, having a different flow might be fine. People coming in and out of one area might be a little disrupt, more disruptive to the neighborhood and less, instead of being broken up as an entrance and an exit, just a thought. But that's where I would see us going in a direction is to limit the toilet area, create a little more of the historic visitor center feel to it, maybe working with the Historical Society or the Chamber on what that would look like for space, see if they would be interested in the responsibility of, of that. And, you know, yeah, a, a good, a good-looking parking area that is warm and inviting to the neighborhood and, and in respect to the historic value of the building. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shereen. Jeff, and then Corey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kurt, nice to see you. How are you this evening?
Thank you.
Listen, I, I, I like, I think the site plan's been improved. I like the fact that the building's being proposed closer to the road. I think we suggested that earlier. I think, I like the traffic flow with one entrance and out. I think having, getting rid of that second entrance kind of preserves more green space and perhaps more parking. It certainly provides for the bike repair station and for electrical hookups. I, I like Shereen's suggestion about the restrooms. I think having a family restroom and maybe a hybrid, if you will, or two hybrids, I call them, would be okay as well. The, the, the one thing that gives me a pause, I, I want to get a building that's worthy of a 40-year life. And I'm concerned that if we're moving a building that's already had a 60-year life or thereabouts and putting it, I need to, I assume it's a full foundation, Kurt, or is it a slab?
Yeah.
Okay. Putting on a full foundation, I think, is a very good idea. In fact, it's, you know, I would, one should insist on it, but, but I, I'm concerned about sills and rot and, you know, I, so my notion is we want a 40- or 50-year asset that maintains all the historical elements that give that flavor of that Eldridge Garage in the new building. And I just don't want rotten, you know, we can have, we can have rotten sills and bad windows and stuff going there. I like the, your notion of the roof and the roof lines and the, and the rafters, you know, but I would just try to keep the historical elements that one looks at and goes, oh, that's the old Eldridge Garage. But in fact, it's going to be a building that's going to last for a while. I just have some concern there. I don't want to be throwing good money after bad and I'm worried about costs here. So I think decreasing the restroom by one would help there. Wonderful news that somebody be interested in donating. I think this is an asset for the town. There's already been a ton of money spent and we'll get some more money spent here, but it's going to be a beautiful little, little enclave, a little park-a-park, if you will, for that east end of the town. Very critical that we have, you know, a shuttle service there and we have a waiting station, if you will. So I think it's a perfect mini shuttle, waiting station, whatever you want to call it, to service the lighthouse and the Fish Pier and the east end of town. So look forward to hearing the final design and the final cost, et cetera. And this is an exciting project and, you know, we've really kind of waited a while for it, but I think it's going to be well worth it when we get the final product. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Corey?
Okay. I'm going to be very careful with my words tonight. First of all, the drainage, the drainage issue is one of the primary concerns I wanted this, this update to, to hit on. And I'm very glad to see that we're on track for that. That's, I know that was a very big concern for some of the neighbors. And we have the funding and we're finally going to put this to rest in December if everything goes on track. So that, 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 that I'm very happy with. I also would like to get this project moving forward and, and come to a final conclusion on sites and details and locations and budgets and everything else. I, I guess I do need to express a little frustration in the process because I, I'm not really sure how to, how to respond to the question about the, the site details tonight, based on a little bit of background. I'm going to tread lightly on my comments because over the summer, you know, we were approached, approached by one of the neighbors and, you know, who did mention of the, this potential donor for some elements of the site. They even offered to do some, the drainage funding and which was clearly a town responsibility. But anyway, the meeting was facilitated with the town manager and staff and, and, you know, it's, it's happened. The full board has not been briefed on, I don't think, on all this. I know some things that were, were mentioned. And I'm concerned that from what my understanding of the donor's intention or potential offer may or may not align with some of the, the details that have been presented tonight. So I would really like to come to a, a point that we are clear on what the, you know, offer is on the table so that we can move it forward in a timely manner because, you know, I, I don't know where that stands. I'd be, be frank about it. I think it's a very, extremely generous of, of any individual to step forward and offer assistance and funding on, on this project. And I very much appreciate the offer, but I don't think the full board is crystal clear on any of those details. And maybe they're still being flushed out, which is fine, because we do need to keep both the intent that we've been working on with the historical preservation of the project and all the details that we've, we've been on track with, with what may or may not be other alternative offers to help with, with the project. So I'm, I'm a little lost of where we should go tonight or where I should vote tonight, because I do want to move this project forward. And I want to be crystal clear on what we're doing and, you know, having this done as a timely a, a manner as possible. But there was nothing in the packet about the donor information and I know that's kind of a undetermined factor right now, but I just, I feel kind of in limbo with that piece not being crystal clear. So those are just my thoughts. I mean, I support this project being revitalized. I think, I think collectively, I think we're looking more on the historic preservation path. You know, using some of the other details that were presented tonight may or may not be the ideal direction for some of the voters in town. And I think we need to discuss that a little bit further. Moving the site location, I guess structurally you just have to determine if it's possible and exactly what the cost is. Moving it under the presentation you made with the flow of traffic, I, I would support at least figuring out, okay, if we did this, what cost is associated with this? But I think the end result potentially would be a better site plan. I, so I do agree with at least exploring that a little bit further. But I, I am supportive of moving this project forward. I just want to make sure we're clear on the details so we can make the most, the best decision vote for the town and for the taxpayers.
Thank you, Corey. Let me give you my, let me, let me give my, these thoughts. I'll start with the bathrooms since that, my thought initially was two or three, I think we need bathrooms down there. We should have a couple of bathrooms in the area down there. I kind of like what, what Shereen said about, you know, that, that area would be a, a family visitor center. And that was one thing that was on my mind. Unisex bathrooms are, you know, you could have two of those and maybe one of them could be a family one. You expand it a little bit or something to that effect. I, I kind of agree with that. I, I'm going to make a couple of comments that nobody did. Having, having those, uh, charging EVs, charging stations and having more than, than one, which was the beginning, and now having four, I think is looking ahead a number of years. Because if you look at where the auto industry is going, look at the number of cars we have in town, plugins, you know, having five there and all, by the way, Tesla and the other guys have different kinds of charging stations. So that's, that's one issue. I don't have a problem with that. The, the- The discussion about, you know, I was wondering, rebuild versus historic, I think a good way was put by both Shereen, and, well, everybody, you know, let's maintain the historic, historic cape, or view of it, and as much of the property, much of the building as you can. And I guess that's what he said. And, you know, I'd also, it ought to be energy efficient. It has to meet the new, the new building guidelines, anyway. They're expanded, and, and that's basically, this small enough building, I like the idea of a, a couple of different entrances, I like the porch on the back. Now moving it, I, I kind of, I agree that that makes sense, looking at that layout and the way it is, it makes sense to me, as far as the site plan and the movement of things that are going around. I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree in some ways with Corey, but, but maybe disagree. I appreciate the fact that we have a donor. I mean, that is just a wonderful, generous thing for someone to do, and, for whatever reason. It's, it's nice to be able to do that. In my mind, given what we know so far, how we proceed is the way we would like to proceed, and hopefully the donor will agree. I don't know the specifics. I haven't heard anything else. And I, I think that, you know, it, this is, this is a building that, that came under a lot of scrutiny. I was on the planning board at the time, and we gave our inputs to it, and this is what we liked. And especially the fact that there's green space behind it, you have a walk space that you can walk down to the water. I mean, it's a beautiful piece of property, and we should use it the way it is. We, we were, we were planning to pay for this all on our own, and I'm not discounting the fact of a donor, I appreciate that very much. But it should be kind of built the way, way the town would like it, and it seems very similar to what was there before. And then just a, one small comment. If it's the Eldridge Garage, and I don't know if anybody's ever brought this up, and maybe it's not the right thing, should we have some kind of a sign that says that? You know, on the outside, on the front? And make it, you know, anybody have an old gas station pump?
That was a recommendation from the committee, that there be signage.
Okay. And that's, that's my, that's my only other comment. Let's see, who, you came back, Shereen, and then?
Yeah.
And Dean.
So obviously, the community's driving the process on this project. And it's clear that they have all along. So I think that that would be the way that we would continue, and in appreciation of, of any donation that comes forward. I think it, this project is appreciative of it, but it has to be driven by the community will of what, what we have put in place. And I think we are. I think we're talking about that. I think, I'm not, I'm not too sure we're not off-base from what the donor wants to see happen there. Time will tell on that. But I think as we move forward, we move forward with the idea that we have a specific set of recommendations from the Eldridge Garage Committee, we have an understanding from the neighborhood, and, and we had three factors here: parking, visitor's center, transportation center, and open space. And I think that's what we're doing. So, you know, that's, that's what I think we're working on this evening.
Dean?
Thank you, Peter. I echo what Shereen just said, and what she said earlier, and I appreciate your reminding me about the interior use, so it's not just utilitarian, but it, it allows for an opportunity for visitors and members of the public to explore the history of the Eldridge Garage property and the gas station. And I think, just in general, the way the town should proceed is to work towards something that we think, and the community thinks best serves the interests among these three areas, including historic preservation. And hopefully, we can come up with a plan that meets with the approval of the donor as well, so that we don't have to fund this entirely ourselves. The last thing I want to say, and I was thinking of this, as, I was triggered to think of this with Shereen's comments just now, when this does come before us in the future, with a finalized version of a plan and the donation proposal, if there is to be one, I'd like to see public comment allowed during that agenda.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Any other comments? Katie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If, if we could, I think that, I just want to review, I think that we did hear from a majority of the board, that I think two restrooms is sufficient, and so that we, when we move forward with the design, that the two restrooms would be what we'd be looking at. It appears that everybody seems to be okay with the moving of the building and kind of the site design layout. I'd just like to get that confirmation as well, so again, we can move that forward. And then also, if we could just ask Kurt whether or not there's any other elements that he feels he needs direction on to move the design forward.
Good. Kurt, anything else?
I think that those are, you know, good, two good points. That helps us kind of refine this, the interior plan. And of course, I think everybody agreed that the site plan is flowing pretty well. I think if we were, if we knew kind of a little bit of our next path for review of the project, would you like us to kind of refine this and bring it back to you? Or would you like us to kind of go ahead and have an informal meeting with the Historic Business District group, to kind of get their feedback? What would you, what would you like us to do, or which group would you like to see next?
Generally, I, I'll defer also to the board, but my, my, my thought is, if you, you go, if you can do an informal discussion with the HBDC, that would be helpful. Not only, you know, for all of us, it would be helpful. And you'll get a lot of help. And I was going to ask if we need a motion, but Dean has a point, and then Shereen.
Yeah, I'm going to let.
I just wanted to say one thing. By the way, I think that's a good idea, Peter. Go to, go to the HBDC first, before you come back to us, because we don't want to be signing off on something that's going to have problems down the line. And I don't know whether that also is going to involve the Historical Commission, because they may very well want to get input, the HBDC might want to get input from the Historical Commission. And if I know the chairman of the Historical Commission, he's going to get himself involved in this. With respect to Katie, the, the issue of moving the building, I think we need to know what the pricing is going to be. What would be the price differential in moving it versus non-moving it, as Shereen inquired about earlier? That's an important factor. Because it's not cheap to move a building, even a small building. Thank you, Peter.
Okay. Shereen, and then Corey.
Dean covered what I was going to say.
Okay, Corey?
Actually, just for clarification, and I may have missed this detail. So if we move it, obviously you've got to pick it up and move it. But if it stays in where it is, are we still going to, we're still going to beef up the foundation? So you're still lifting up the, if, mechanically, you're still going to lift it up. So it's a question of lifting it up on the cribbing, jack it up, how many inches, and then lowering it down to a set foundation, which I've done before, and I know, I know, I know all the details with that. Or it's lifting it up, and then moving it relatively short locations. So I don't think the costs, additional costs would be that significant, because you're not moving it around power lines, or down private roads, or state highways. So I, I mean, I would love to get the number, but you're still going to lift up the building anyway, so.
Okay. Any other comments?
No, Mr. Chairman, I think we have the information we need to move forward.
Okay, I think we should do a vote, right? And, how about, I have something scribbled, I just put down here. How about we move the preliminary concept design B completed, given the specific design features discussed for approval, and for approval at a subsequent meeting? Basically, what's it down here? Does that make sense? Yeah, I'm sorry, Dean.
I think, I think what we should do is just, if we want to take a vote, and I'll amend your motion, I guess, although that hasn't been, I'll second it, and then I'll amend it. That, that we move that the, the town staff, working with the consultants, proceed to develop further refinement of the proposal in accordance with the comments this evening at the Select Board. I think that should be sufficient to cover everything.
Cover it? Good. I didn't really make a motion, I just offered that as words.
Okay, well, that's the motion.
That's the motion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Any discussion? None? Let's take a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you very much. Thank you. I look forward to having this thing done. It'd be great. Okay. Next, next on our agenda is to, I haven't taken a look, is to, hey, thank you, Kurt, I'm sorry. Thanks again. Is to convene the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And I haven't noticed, I saw Bruce on here before, and I'm not sure whether Megan is on here.
She's on.
She's on?
I'm here.
Hi, how are you? Okay, let's, let's, let's take a vote on convening the board, the trustees. We'll start with Bruce Bean.
Yes.
Okay, Megan's story.
Yes.
Yeah, or present, okay, good. Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Present.
Corey?
Present.
And Shereen?
Present.
And the chair is present. We have, we have convened the Affordable House Trust Fund. Now we have to move to executive, executive session. Can I have a vote? I mean, excuse me, a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Dean, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board go into executive, that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees go into executive session, and the Board of Selectmen, to, under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 23B, Number 3 and Number 6, to consider the purchase exchange taking lease or value of real property, parentheses, update on property acquisition for affordable slash attainable housing, close parenthesis, and the chair declares, "An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating and litigating positions of the public body with no return to open session."
Thank you. Dean, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? None? Okay, Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you, everyone, tonight.
Two, two. Oh. Bruce and Megan.
Uh, pardon?
Bruce and Megan, Esther.
Bruce and Megan.
Oh, very good. Thank you. And Bruce?
Aye.
And Megan?
Aye.
Okay, let me try that again. And I, I thank everyone for their effort tonight. Good night, Chadam.